We're live. And it's on the delay, so it's gonna...
Extra copy.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
So, so don't get too disconcerting. Okay. We are now live. All the mics are live. And if you would like...
If I don't want to be heard, I do that.
Yeah.
Got it.
You want to be muted, push it off, but assume you are live.
Okay.
And we'll get... You can see what's being put out to the west of the world.
Can we see if people are watching?
No, because this is the Zoom. It would be on the YouTube.
Okay.
And I guess if I switch back and forth, but it would, it's disconcerting because there's a 20-second delay.
Okay. Okay.
You're in a timeline.
Okay. You're learning so much, though.
I know.
Which is exciting.
Like, I guess.
That's, that's how I try to spin it.
Yep, try to keep those neurons on.
Never thought I'd know Zoom, and now I do.
Yeah.
Well, uh, thank Kevin.
Okay. He was one messaging to make sure we were gonna be here, right?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, it's just this.
So we can put you on the spot. Yeah.
Who, Jonathan? Yeah, we can flip the screen, the camera.
We can, why don't we... Oh, you have to do this infrared. Tell me, this is gonna be awful. Yeah, now you're on.
Sort of.
Yeah.
Is this the first in-person meeting for the zoning board?
No, it's the first live streaming meeting for the zoning board.
Yeah.
Because we were gonna do it last one, and it just, things fell apart, or the planning board, one of them.
Yeah, we've had, like, three, third, I in-person.
I feel like, yeah, because I remember having one here, one over there.
Yeah, one they had us separated around the room.
That might have happened a couple of...
Yeah, I think it happened a couple of times.
Yeah.
And I think it's, uh, it was told it was more important that we get this speaker. So anybody who wants to come up here and be at the speaker podium will have the camera on you, and you can show them, and show your plans. Or we'll turn that off and I'll just face you.
Are you Mr. Till?
Yes.
Oh, okay. It's nice to meet you.
I'm gonna leave it on one, because I think the battery on this are done. Oh, yeah.
And you're, is it Kurtulik? I love your house. I walk by your house all the time. It's so nice. It's very picturesque.
Real stuff.
Yeah.
It just so happens to be on a non-conforming lot.
What are the chances in the village that there would be a non-conforming lot?
Oh, we're just finishing up.
How's it going?
Good.
So...
You're live, too.
We're live now.
Oh, hello.
Yeah.
It's called your wife, she's watching.
Anybody tuning in at the same time, you can talk.
All right, let's see. How are you?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Right. Call to order, the September 9th, 2021, Meeting of the Village of Cornwall and Hudson Zoning Board of Appeals. This evening, we have one item on the agenda. That is, uh, an application by Raymond and Susan Kurtulik of 81 Weeks Avenue. The applicants are requesting variances of Section 172-8. C1 of the village's zoning code to allow for the construction of an addition to a home with, number one, a 8.5-foot side yard setback on one side when the code requires a side yard setback of 15 feet, and two, a rear yard setback of 15.6 feet when the code requires a 34, 30-foot rear yard setback. The applicant would like to introduce the proposal.
Good evening. John Till, architect for the project. And as you were mentioning, we are seeking a side yard and rear yard variance. The overall plan for the project is to extend the existing house for a new first-level bedroom and bathroom for Rainsoo, and an extension of the kitchen and dining area towards the rear. Essentially, the, the bedroom extension is going to be to the left rear of the house. The, uh, the variance is required. The side yard variance that we're seeking is for the 8.5 feet, but we're currently only 7.9 feet existing. So we're not extending the nonconformity. We're less than the existing condition now, but it still requires a variance because the, the rule is 15 feet for the side yard.
It's the side yard?
That's the side yard for the bedroom area.
Currently 7.9 feet?
7.9 feet is our existing dimension to the property line, and the, the dimension to the proposed addition will be 8.5 feet. So we're, like I said, we're not extending the nonconformity on that side of the property. The rear yard is a different story. We're currently, um, we're currently 17.6 feet, and we're asking for a two-foot variance in the rear to extend the rear dining and kitchen area into that area. We're currently, uh, the dimension is currently at 17 foot 6 inches, so that would be reduced to 15 foot 6 inches on the rear yard.
And that's just off the existing screen?
The screen porch and rear garage, which are both, both of those are existing.
But on the addition, it doesn't go on beyond that. It's only the extension on the back end of that.
The, the extension, yeah, exactly. Yeah.
The other one is actually within that.
Right, right. So we're, we're extending the, the nonconformity in the back, but we're maintaining the nonconformity on the side. Both still need a variance, though, in both cases, according to, uh, Building Department. So, uh, the existing conditions on the site are very particular to this lot. There's a New York City right-of-way water aqueduct right-of-way to the one side of the build, uh, side of the lot, which, back in the, I guess, the 30s, when they built, when they subdivided these lots and, and had this right-of-way through here, they pushed the house all the way to the left side and towards the rear. So it's, the condition is, um, it, it's not conforming to the current zoning, to no fault of their own, but it's, uh, uh, an existing condition that's particular to this lot in terms of, uh, the request for the variance.
On the site plan, that's the, uh, the space in between the dotted lines.
Yeah, that looks like the size of a highway there.
Yeah.
And, uh, so we're not permitted to, you know, well, that, there's other rules for that area, but that's, that's why this house exists on that side of the lot, uh, in the first place. I've, um, if I may, I do have some overview shots as well. I can pass them around.
Gives you an idea of what's happening in the neighborhood there and what's happening across the rear yards currently. So the red dot in the center, the red dot in the center of the page is 81, 81 Weeks. And...
Sorry. No worries. Thank you.
And you can see the rear yards across, you know, further south and further north on the page there. There are other lots that are, you know, uh, nonconforming, coming closer to the property lines. If you look at the fence line, that's basically the property lines across the backyards there. And you can see that there are some that are close, some that are, uh, further. But just to give you an idea that it's not adversarial to the neighborhood. It's not, uh, in terms of the, the variance that we're requesting. We took a hard look at the design. We feel that this is the, the right design for, for the homeowners and still asking for the least amount of variance possible. We thought that would, this is the right solution for them, and, and to also, again, ask for the least amount of variance. That makes sense. We're not looking for any height variances.
One story, right?
One story. The, the house is two stories, but the addition is one story, uh, across the back. And that's some, partly why we need to, uh, extend into the backyard is because we're trying to preserve the second-floor windows as much as we can up against the existing house. So our roof lines are, are limited to, to our options back there. To that respect. Yeah, so that's, uh, the, the extent of our, our request.
And it's not up again, it looks like the neighbors, the house immediately adjacent is, it, um, it doesn't extend back this far, so you're not putting the addition close up to their, their wall.
Correct, correct. We're, the side yard, we're not encroaching any closer than we currently are. And you could even see on the survey, the, the neighboring house is approximately 9.5 feet off the property line as well. So it's, uh, kind of a, a similar setback in, in the neighborhood.
Right, and going in the back there, it doesn't, the, on the addition piece of it, that's, even though you're extending the existing screen by a couple of feet, it's not like you're popping out this, you know, the addition way out.
Yeah, yeah, correct, correct. We're, you know, the, 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 the extension is two feet.
You get a couple of feet on that.
You know, we're already nonconforming at 17 feet, so, because that, that's the existing condition that we're working with. Uh, as opposed to we're at 30 feet going 15 foot into the side yard.
Yep.
You know, we're, we're kind of, we're, we're basically, based on the existing conditions, we're kind of boxed in to what we can do here.
And the addition is, uh, let's see, it's, uh, dining room on one side near the garage. And then on the other side, that's closest to the neighboring house, that's a bedroom.
Correct. On the floor plans, you'll see the darker walls are the new walls, the lighter walls are the existing walls. And, uh, on the floor plan to the left side is the, uh, proposed bedroom, uh, with a hallway down the center, uh, accessing a bathroom, new bathroom. Uh, and, uh, the kitchen is kind of centered in the house, but being renovated and extended towards the rear for, you know, appropriate dining area in that, in that respect.
Does anything open out into the backyard? There's no, there's no hardscape, like a patio or a deck or anything like that?
Uh, we have, we're, we're proposing one door out of the back of the garage, just as swings in, and that's just to access the backyard. We're not proposing any landscaping features back there. I'm assuming it's, it's turf, it's grass right now in terms of what it is. I don't believe we're looking to do any additional, uh, hardscape back there. That, uh, and what's there.
I'm just curious, and this is just from my own, the aqueduct piece of that, so i- is it, you can't do anything on top of that?
Well, it, it, the, the word aqueduct isn't, it's the right-of-way that, that makes the, that, it doesn't matter what's after that. When it says it's a right-of-way, it's legal right-of-way after that, yeah.
I just wanted, because it must extend, you know, it...
It might turn, you know, depending upon what happens in the neighborhood, it could...
I'm just curious, because there's houses, you know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah.
Just sort of.
It might, it might turn, you know, a different direction. I don't know what the master plan for that is. Not really sure the rules of that either, like, what, is it, is it an active right-of-way? Is it an abandoned right-of-way? I don't, don't really know.
Yeah, I was curious.
Yeah. The surveyor put it on here, so...
Don't drill down.
Yeah. Exactly.
I had a question. The, um, there's an affidavit of regularity that, I guess, neighbors were served with notice, but it says, "See attached list of names and addresses," and I don't see the list.
Oh, Arlene gave us the list and provided the mailing to all the, so Arlene gave us a, a list of like 50 names or so within like a 500-foot radius
Okay.
of all the property owners and section block and lot owners. So Arlene has us, um, prepare all the envelopes, uh, put the public notice in.
I think I just didn't get a copy of it.
Yeah, yeah, so this is a couple of housekeeping items there, so, um, so the, the, it's delivered back to Arlene, and then she puts it in the mail, and it's just regular mail for the zoning board appeals. And then the, the affidavit, here's a, uh, notarized affidavit from Cornwall Local uh, that I am to bring to the meeting, according to Arlene, and I have to deliver it to her tomorrow morning. So that's the affidavit stating that we had the ad in the paper for so many days before...
Yeah, I'm just making sure, that's all.
Yeah, 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 so that, and that, that, that takes care of their, uh, legal requirements, as well as the sign being up on the property,
Let's see the sign.
which is there. It's been there the proper amount of time.
And nobody has called with any complaints or objections?
To the best of my knowledge, I haven't, uh, had any, uh, calls from anybody. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I just checked the folder. It doesn't look like anyone has submitted a, a letter of support or condemnation.
Yeah, okay.
So let's see, I guess the only, um, the only concern that I'm looking at is, you know, on the, uh, on the side that's closest to the house, to the neighboring house, you're not going any closer, but it's, uh, it's basically just extending the current, uh, nonconforming setback. Yeah, so looking at, uh, the addition, uh, concerns would be if there's, you know, because it's so close to the house, is there anything, uh, that would kind of disturb their backyard, their privacy? Uh, any big gathering spaces, like in an outdoor space or a, you know, big gathering space inside of the house? Looks like you've put the, uh, a bedroom right next to, uh, in, in that location. So that's, you know, it's typically a, a quiet place in your home.
Yeah, and we've also, that, that wall has the least amount of windows on it for privacy. Uh, we thought that would make the most sense, uh, for that side. And, uh, and, and as you can see in the neighborhood, there's, uh, some properties that move in and out. Uh, you know, as you go along the back fence line there, some, some houses are closer, some houses are further back. So it's fairly consistent to what's happening in the neighborhood in general. Uh, it's not more or less than what's going on there. And, you know, we've, we've kind of placed the bedroom size to the, the, the minimum size that, that we can still make it work based on, you know, putting all the pieces together, the, the kitchen width, the bathroom width, and then the bedroom width is all compacted to the minimum size that makes sense for them to, to still use.
Just looking at any, um, kind of practical, physical problems it may, uh, create in terms of drainage or anything like that. Looks like the, the roof line is, uh, drains to the rear and then towards the building. Uh, so you have a gutter that would run perpendicular to the, the, the property line.
Generally speaking, the sheet flow of the property kind of pitches from the...
Towards Weeks?
Yeah, uh, kind of towards Weeks, and, and the whole, the whole neighborhood pitches down Weeks and, you know, through the backyards and such. So the, the normal sheet flow would, would still remain as it's been, you know, uh, we're not disturbing it. And, uh, the, and of course, the existing, you know, the, the addition will have footing drains, uh, as well, and, you know, uh, it'll have gutters and leaders, uh, as well to control water in general. Uh, but we're not seeing, uh, any issue there with, uh, you know, any type of ponding or flooding on the property or off the property. It's been draining fine ever, you know, for the most part.
Would there be, uh, you're gonna have a drainage layer at that corner, at the two corners, closest to the neighbors? I'm basically looking at like, uh, you're creating an extra roof space that has to be drained. Want to make sure it's not just dumping onto the neighbor's property if it's such a close...
Yeah, I think we have a, an idea what's happening there. So the, the, the face that faces the neighbor is actually a gable, uh, face, and it won't have a gutter, and it won't be bringing water in that direction. But it does go back and, front to back. So we will be, you know, having a gutter on the, the front portion of the addition and the back part of the addition. And that'll come, the little, little gutter will come across to a, a downspout to just a splash block on the property there, as it does now, you know, currently.
Yeah, I think maybe, uh, just in practical terms, if you want to, um, kind of develop it a little more than a splash block, kind of have like a, I don't know, a rock garden, you know, just something to, to retain the water, to keep it from flooding.
Maybe some, like a gravel, like a, like a, a stone gravel to disperse the water.
Like a, a...
More absorption.
With, uh, stones and plants.
Yeah, we'd be, we'd be happy to do that. Sure.
That water flow. Comments, concerns?
No.
Okay, yeah, I think we have enough information. We don't have any members of the public here, and we don't have any, uh, no one has submitted any comments. So I think we'll close the public, uh, portion of the meeting.
So before we close, yeah, you can close the, the public portion of the meeting. Before we close the public hearing, though, um, the only concern I have is, as far as I'm aware, we haven't received any comments from the county. I don't know if maybe you got something in your file just yesterday or today.
This is, uh, if they are, is it 500 feet within?
Yeah, so the 239 memory, yeah. So because the property is located within 500 feet of the town of Cornwall, the matter has to be referred to the county planning department for comment. And with a residential addition like this, 99% of the time, they're gonna determine it's a matter, matter of local concern, and then the ZBA can vote. But before we receive those comments, or the, we have to receive those comments before the ZBA can vote. So we can't vote. Yeah.
The, um, is it, the, the statute is 500 feet to the proper, to the, to the town line of Town of Cornwall?
Yeah.
Not to the county highway?
No.
Or both?
Both, but, yeah.
Because I know we weren't within 500 feet of the county highway, because we measured that, but just the proximity to the line, okay.
Unfortunately.
So the, 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 the procedure would be to, um, wait?
So, yeah.
Comments?
If, if we don't have it in the file today, um, the board will move to hold the public hearing open until the next, either the next reg, next regularly scheduled meeting, or they can, uh, set a special meeting, but that date would have to be set tonight. Either way, though, you don't have to send the mailings out or anything. Again, the public hearing is just held open.
We are, we are hoping to, um, we're fighting the weather. We're hoping to get our foundations in, obviously, before, uh, the frost starts setting into the ground and it becomes more difficult. So if there's any consideration there, be helpful.
Nothing in the file?
I don't see it, no.
Okay, so, yeah, unfortunately, the only option is to hold the public hearing open and vote at the next meeting. Does the board want to...
Can we, can we, can we put it in there that we can vote as soon as we...
Can we make a contingent upon...
Soon as we get the, uh, notice from the county?
Um, I mean, yeah, you can do like an informal vote, but, um, until, there has to be a, a public hearing. The vote has to be conducted at a public hearing once the comments have been returned.
Right.
So, yeah, the, the only option...
What constituted a, a public hearing?
Um, it would either have to be the next regularly scheduled meeting, or if you want to set a special meeting for sometime in between, but we'd have to set that date tonight.
Right, but we don't know when the
Right.
county notice is gonna come in. Because if the county notice comes in tomorrow...
Yeah, then we could have a meeting.
About Monday or Tuesday.
Right.
Is it possible to vote with a contingency of, of what?
That's what we were just asking.
Yeah, no. I mean, like I said, they can, I think you probably have a, a good idea of which way the board's gonna go, but, uh, it would have to be at a public hearing.
Is there, is there a time limit, a 30-day time, time limit that they usually wait for that? And do we know if that, and if, after that time limit is up, if there's no response, that's, that is the response?
Correct.
And I'm assuming Arlene would have sent that out?
Yes.
I don't see any email from Arlene from today.
I mean, if you wanted to set something for two weeks, that would...
Maybe we'll just set one for two weeks and then, um, as long as it's in at that point.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that would almost certainly encompass the 30 days required.
We can do it, uh, we do it drive-through style, right? Open the meeting.
Yep.
We take this very seriously. Um, okay, two weeks would be like the 20... The 29th. Yes, it's only the 9th today. Okay.
See, the 23rd.
Yeah, 23rd. Okay. Yeah, that works for, are you guys available?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so, so we'll set, uh, a, a meeting for Thursday, September 23rd at 7:00.
23rd, very good. Excellent.
Do you want to make a, a motion to?
Uh, yes.
Yes.
Make a motion to have a, a special meeting on September 23rd at 7:00.
All right, and the, the ZBA will have to post a special notice on the website, but the applicant does not need to send out any further mailings?
We'll update the sign on the property
Okay, great.
as well.
It was also asked if you could lean into the microphone since it's... No, I'm sorry, I saw that.
Oh, okay.
Uh, and we, we need to, uh, make the, make a public announcement that this is happening, so put it on the website.
You're right, yeah. Yeah, I'm sure Arlene can take care of that.
Um, okay, I apologize, we don't have that information, and we are not able to vote, but...
Sure. Well, thank you. I appreciate it, and I really appreciate the special meeting as well. Much appreciated. Thank you.
And if for some reason we're not receiving that information by that, we'll let you know.
Great, thank you. Thanks again.
Sure.
Have a good night.
Yeah, you too. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, okay, so we're done then.
Okay. Those notices normally go to Arlene, right?
Yeah, they go to Arlene, and then she includes it in the address.
Okay. Yeah, once you mentioned it, I remembered seeing it in, in your email this morning.
Yeah.
That we, you know, do we have it?
Yeah, usually they're pretty good, uh, about getting it done, but, uh...
Yeah.
Well, as soon as you, did you want to vote on minutes, or did you just want to... Get a vote on the...
Which one is it?
Only, uh, the ones from June 10.
Want me to make a motion to approve the minutes from June 10? There you go.
Okay.
I second. I second.
All in favor? There you go.
And then? Motion to adjourn, yeah.
Uh, yes.
We do a motion to adjourn the meeting, even though we're keeping the meeting?
Uh, well, it's, it remains open, we just motion to conclude the meeting.
To go home? Okay. Come on, go for it.
Motion to close the meeting.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you. I'll see you here on the 23rd.
Okay.
Yeah, you did good. I think this is the first time you're by yourself, right? Yeah. Good job.
Pretty straightforward.
To you, yeah.
Except when you don't have the one piece.
Yeah. I feel so bad for them.
It's like the worst, like you were saying. It's like a race against time, you know, during the fall to, uh, get stuff in the ground, or else you gotta wait.
And every time it happens, the applicants, you know, they're always like, you know.